Wait, hold on.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting of the planning commission. This is a virtual meeting, of course. And I would first like for Mr. Turner to review the procedures for people to participate remotely this evening.
Thank you, Chair Dorn. Regarding procedures for communicating, the commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those participating on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternately, if you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. With that said, I hand it back to Chair Dorn.
Thank you. So I'd like to do a roll call for the record. Commissioner DeCarty. Waving at me, so he's here. Commissioner Harris?
I'm here.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. I see you. So you're here. Commissioner Riggs?
Present, and I might make the suggestion to the chair, you check your volume. It's a bit low.
Okay, I'm not sure how to control volume on my microphone.
Yeah, you're almost inaudible.
Let me, maybe I can change microphones. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, we'll stick with this microphone. So I'm present accord, and gives us five commissioners present. We have a quorum. I'm expecting Commissioner Barnes to be absent for the entire meeting. Commissioner Tate may join us later. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Sandmeyer if she has any reports and announcements for us.
Yes, good evening, Chair Dorn and Commissioners. So the City Council will meet tomorrow night. And one of the items on the agenda is to consider two appeals of the Menlo Uptown project and to consider the planning commission's recommendation to appeal, to approve the vesting tentative map for this project. An appeal for the Menlo Portal project is also on the agenda, and the City Council will also consider the planning commission's recommendation to approve a public utilities easement abandonment for this project. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the commission from Ms. Sandmeyer? Seeing none, I'll move to public comment. In your public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comment?
I am not seeing any hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, let's give a moment. Anyone wants to comment, please raise your hand, and Mr. Turner will call him. So no hands?
I can confirm, no, no hands at this point.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar is the approval of minutes from August 9, 2021. Does anyone want to remove the minutes from the consent calendar and provide any comments or feedback on the minutes? Okay, I don't see any commissioners wishing to remove the minutes. I want to ask Ms. Sandmeyer if, if there's no one wanting to comment or take them out of the consent calendar, do we need to take a vote, or is it considered approved by consent?
No, there should still be a vote on the consent items.
Okay, let's take a vote on the consent calendar. Commissioner DeCarty?
Sorry, this is a point of order. Do you need a motion, or do we just vote?
Ms. Sandmeyer, parliamentarian?
Yes, yeah, I believe there should be a motion and second and vote.
In that case, would someone like to move to approve the consent count? Ms. Kennedy? So moved. Second, Commissioner DeCarty. Very good. Commissioner DeCarty, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain because I was absent for the meeting of August 9, but the motion passes for, in favor of one abstention. We've got a quorum. I'd like to move on at this point to the public hearing. Open the public hearing. We have an application for a use permit by Rebecca and Kevin Lauchy at 248 Oakhurst Place. This is a request for a use permit to construct a second floor addition, perform interior and exterior modifications to an existing non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential zoning district. The value of the proposed work would exceed 50% of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period, and therefore requires a use permit. We have a staff report by Mr. Tapia. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and members of the public. I don't have any updates to the staff report, but I am available to answer any questions at this time.
Do you have any questions from the commission on the staff report? I actually have a question. In the staff report, the staff mentioned, you mentioned that the commission may wish to consider adding conditions related to the design of the home to create a more cohesive appearance and/or allow optional future upgrades to the windows and siding. I'm a little unclear on adding conditions to the approval for optional upgrades. I understand we can add commission, conditions to the approval to require upgrades, but I'm not clear on sort of what we'd be doing if we add a condition for optional upgrades. Optional upgrades are always, always possible, aren't they?
Right, I guess the idea behind that was to potentially try to, I guess, so to speak, limit potential discretionary review in the future if it is just a minor update to make it a more cohesive appearance. For example, if it's creating new windows to match the proposed windows, that way it'll be a more streamlined process, so that way the applicant won't have to come back in the near future to go through this whole process again. Essentially, that's kind of would be a consensus with those potential optional conditions for the commission to consider.
Okay, thanks for putting that up. Do we have any other questions from Mr. Tapia? Okay, so do we have a presentation from the architect to the applicant?
Yes, the applicant team is here, and they should be coming on right now to speak on it.
Okay, so you have the floor, whoever, whatever order you want to do it in, whoever wants to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Me Chen Mai, and I'm the project manager and designer of 248 Oakhurst Place. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this project to you tonight. I trust that you've had a chance to look over the staff report that Leo has thoughtfully presented, I mean, sorry, created for us. So let me just go over the main points of this project. The existing residence is a single-story ranch style house with an attached two-car garage. It's located in a triangular-shaped lot with a large open yard, and the owner fell in love with it. It is an existing non-conforming structure because portions of the house encroach into the required side and rear setbacks. There's also a 10-feet public utility easement that runs through the house, and we're in the process of vacating that with Menlo Park Public Works. So the Locies are a family of five, and you probably see here, this is Rebecca Loke. She is, sorry, she's the owner, and her husband is putting the kids to sleep, but he's probably listening right now. So the Locies are a family of five. They have lived in Menlo Park for many years, and they're very happy to finally be able to find a house for their kids to grow up in. They need more space now to accommodate their growing family. They love the big yard, and so that was something we knew we had to preserve. They are not interested in tearing down the house, nor is it in their budget to tear down the house and build a new house. So we felt this was an opportunity to create something more visually compelling while minimizing the mass. We are proposing a second story addition with two bedrooms and a bathroom, and a small addition and remodel on the first floor to accommodate the new stairs. The entire addition will be located beyond the required setback. The unconventional lot shape proved to be quite challenging for this project. We knew we wanted to add a second story in order to maintain the open space, but to also respect the setbacks and not add to its nonconformity. We have explored an addition that was straightforward where the second story walls matched the existing first floor footprint, but that resulted in a very bulky and boxy form, and also very complicated roof lines. Our proposed design sets the second floor walls back from the first floor, and a new A-frame roof with dormers to create an overall second story. This reduces the apparent height of the new walls, but also the overheight of the overall height of the house. So the Locies have reached out to the neighbors and have shown them the design. They have full support from the neighbors on either side who share the property lines, as well as the neighbors from across the street. Their support letters are also included in the last pages of the staff report. We believe this design to be a great improvement to the house and meet the needs of the Locies. That concludes my presentation, so I'm happy to take any questions you may have. And Rebecca is also happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission at this time? Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. Yes, regarding the neighbor outreach, I did see the two letters. If I, if I spotted everything, it was one neighbor across the street and one neighbor adjacent that wrote letters. Is that correct, or were there, were there more responses?
There are three letters, I believe, there's on either side. It's a triangle lot, so they share property lines with two neighbors and the one across the street letter.
Thank you. I think there's two letters and an email in the file.
Ah.
Correct. That's, I consider that a letter. My apologies.
All right, thank you very much.
Do we have other questions from the commission?
That's it.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment this time. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised at this time?
At this time, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Maybe we can give it a minute or two. Just as a reminder, if you do want to make public comment, click the raise hand button on the Zoom screen, and that'll notify me that you are in line to make a comment.
Okay, let's give it a moment. Still no hands raised?
Correct. I'm still not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission for comments or further questions. Anyone like to speak on this project? Commissioner DeCarty?
This is actually a question for staff, and I apologize for my ignorance, but can you walk through why we are reviewing this project? What's the trigger? And just explain the sequencing on the two issues, the 50%, more than 50% in the calendar year, and then the nonconformance, which I think are the two. But how do they relate, and did one trigger it for us, and then the other one kicks in? If you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, certainly. So what's happening here is that the existing house happened to be built in one of the required setbacks. And when you have an existing structure that does not comply with the current regulations, at that point, it's deemed illegal nonconforming structure. And essentially, when you want to propose work on a legal nonconforming structure, you are permitted to do, you know, certain renovations or expansions. The only caveats are that the expansions or any additions have to comply with the current regulations. And in this particular example, the house itself, the current existing first floor, is located in the rear inside yard setbacks, so currently it does not comply with the current regulations. So, you know, it's nonconforming. And knowing that, given that the fact that this applicant wants to propose renovations, that's where we start looking at that new work value calculation, such as that percentage that you see in the staff report. And the way that works, essentially, those are intertwined, is that within a 12-month calendar year, applicants are permitted to potentially propose renovations to the house, and as long as you're under that prescribed threshold, whether it's 50% for a proposed or current two-story home, or 75% for an existing one proposed one-story home. As long as you're beneath that threshold, you're permitted to proceed through the standard building permit process, so essentially no discretionary review. However, once you exceed that threshold, that's where it triggers this discretionary review, which happened to be the case in this situation, because that expansion of the second floor, as well as the other kind of modifications to the house exceeded that 50% replacement value of the existing home. Essentially, that's what it's, that's essentially the baseline that we're working on. We're assigning a base, baseline value for the existing structure, and then we're also calculating the proposed value of the new work. And that's how we find those ratios. And in this situation, the proposed work exceeded that threshold, and thus triggered that use permit for this project.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a follow-up question on that? That's okay?
Sure.
So to try to help me wrap my head around it, if this were an existing structure that was conforming by all measures on the lot, and it had exceeded the 50% threshold, as you discussed, would we be seeing it?
So the main reason this project is here is because it's nonconforming, and it exceeded the nonconforming value for the work that's proposed. Had it been a conforming structure, meaning that it complied with all the current regulations, this would not be one of the triggers as to why it would be here. The other potential trigger would be if the lot were substandard, and you're adding, let's say, a second floor addition that's more than 50% of the existing value. That's where it may get a little confusing. That's another potential trigger. But in this situation, we're only looking at the new work value because it's nonconforming.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask the question the other direction. I really appreciate this, which is, okay, it's nonconforming, but now they're doing renovations that are less than the 50%. Would we be seeing that?
No, in that situation, it would go straight to the building permit process, no discretionary review.
Right. So as a commissioner, if I'm thinking about questions around precedent, it is the unique situation of both of these things coming together and overlapping that has brought this before us. Is that the way to conclude this?
Yeah, that's a good way to.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Dorn.
Sure. We have other, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes, so sort of to take Commissioner DeCarty's questions, and then Leo's, Mr. Tapia's answers. So I have two questions. So through the chair to staff, two questions. What size project wouldn't have triggered any of this, right? What could they do on that lot to make it more usable for themselves, right? You know, a little, a little tiny, like, pop-up or something. And then the other question, and you probably, you might have the answer to this, you might not, but in the city of Menlo Park, where would you find most of these types of properties? Are they in one particular neighborhood as opposed to another? Is one neighborhood more encumbered by significant changes in the zoning laws than another neighborhood? Is there an undue burden on some communities more than on other neighborhoods? You see where I'm going?
Right. So to try to answer your first question, if I still remember it, essentially, this project, if the applicant so decided to, they could have proposed a more limited scope of work. And in that sense, because the only thing we're looking at for this, for this specific project, is that it's exceeding the new work value, meaning that it crossed that 50% threshold. Had they proposed a more limited scope of work that did not cross that 50%, 50% threshold, this project could have gone through the normal building permit process. So that's one scenario where they could have, you know, gone that route. The other potential option, that's probably a little bit more costlier, and probably not the option that most people want to consider, is that essentially, someone could potentially renovate their house to comply with the current regulations. So therefore, going forward, the house will now be conforming, and you won't need to worry about those, you know, nonconforming values, and whether or not it'll cross a certain threshold. So hopefully, that answered your first question. And as it relates to your second question, I can't really speak much to that. I just know that, better yet, I think I'd probably rather invite Ms. Sandmeyer to try to answer that as it relates to which properties in the city may have more nonconforming structures, or which ones may have more substandard lots, but hopefully, my colleague, Karine Sandmark, could provide some further context on that.
Yeah, I, certainly, there's nonconforming structures throughout the city and also substandard lots. I don't think we've done a study if there's more in one neighborhood than another, but certainly, we've seen them throughout the city. I hope that helps.
It does. You know, I think that the challenge for me is that, you know, whenever we, whenever I personally see a project come before us that is a homeowner wanting to make a home modestly larger, right, so they can stay in the community, they can stay where they've lived, they're, they're, you know, they've got relationships in the community. And, and the process, these processes are really challenging. They're expensive, they're time-consuming, and they're not equal for everybody. You know, a dollar in this community for one family is not the same as a dollar in another community, right? And so, you know, the, it is, it's really hard, right? I would say personally, it's really hard to sit here week out, you know, every other week after every other week, and, you know, folks are coming here that, you know, they, they want to do, they want to make these homes work for their families, thinking about also potentially having in-laws moving within them or elderly parents, right? And our processes seem to get more and more cumbersome, right? And it, it almost discourages families from renovating homes, and, and discourages, and then encourages developers to buy properties and just start from scratch because they have deep pockets. So that's, that's my soapbox for this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. I'd like to just reflect on that. I totally agree with your goals of keeping families in their houses. I think the most environmentally responsible thing to do is to not tear down and rebuild, right? That's the least impactful on the environment, to try to work with what we've got here. I don't know what statistics are about nonconforming structures. I share a suspicion that the parts of the city that have smaller lots likely have more nonconforming structures, just because it's harder to comply with the setbacks on a smaller lot. But I do think that the problem of substandard lots is citywide. Some of the largest lots in the city are on Hermosa Street. They're mostly half-acre lots. And amazingly, those half-acre lots, most of them are substandard, because they don't conform the lot with requirements. But they're the largest lots in Menlo Park. So I think the problem of, you know, the percentage of substandard lots in Menlo Park is very high, and I think that citywide, it's not confined to any one neighborhood. That's, that's my observation, my opinion. I don't have statistics to back it up. Do we have other commissioners that would like to comment? Commissioner DeCarty?
I'll defer to others since I already spoke once. I do have a couple other questions, though.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that you can defer to? Commissioner Riggs?
Good evening. This was an interesting project to look at, because, I mean, you can't help but, architects see design challenges all the time, and most of the fun is in responding to something that's a little bit unusual. And triangular lots occur in my neighborhood and adjacent to my neighborhood, which is suburban park, where first place is, I have to say, this is an unusual solution. It's almost, reflects a different kind of history of American architectural growth, where an addition sometimes was put on a house that simply disregarded what was underneath, and simply did what was either in style at the moment, or what most directly fulfilled a function at the time. And after 100 years goes by, it seems quaint, rather than awkward. So I, getting to the specifics here, staff has raised the question of the difference in materials on the proposed second floor versus the existing first floor. I am inclined to look at the rather logical commentary that at this time, funds are not available to change out the first floor windows or reconsider the siding, but that option is there in the future. And in this case, I really don't think matching materials would make a significant difference to this particular design approach. So I just wanted to say that I acknowledge that concern, and I think in this case, the commission could overlook that. And further to that, I rather like the staff suggestion that we might, as we have from time to time, include a condition that would allow the applicants in the future to make those upgrades without, because it would be somewhat ironic, to come back to the commission to ask for something that we would have urged them to do. So the only concern really I have with this design is the stairwell window. I've often expressed concern when it is rather close to the second floor, the window that they have in the landing. To have it be rather close to the landing makes it all the more obvious that the, the view out the stairwell window could significantly impact the yard space and or ground floor of the adjacent neighbors, lacking an actual section through the two sites. But acknowledging this triangular site, in a sense, there are three front facades and, and one back facade. I'd like to propose an option to the applicant, which is either raise the window up to no less than two feet above the second floor line for the sill, or simply make the glass obscure. And by obscure, I mean, that would be any textured glass would serve the purpose for privacy for both you on your stairs and your second floor, and for the neighbors. Other than that, if the chair will entertain it, I'd like to Other than that, um, if the chair will entertain it, I, I'd like to um, make a motion to approve. With the condition that the stairwell window is either obscure glass or raised to a sill height of a minimum of two feet above the. Second floor line. And that. Included in our approval tonight would be the option to. Change the siding on the first floor to match the proposed second floor addition. And to upgrade the windows on the first floor to match the um. Style and materials of the proposed second floor windows.
Commissioner Riggs, I'd just like to clarify in your motion. That uh, you're proposing the obscure glass would only need to extend to two feet above the second floor floor line? You're not proposing obscure glass all the way up?
Yes, yes, the whole, the whole window. Either move the window or uh, make it out of obscure glass, right?
Could I just ask you before we proceed? If you could have clear glass. With a window where the sill was two feet above. The floor line, the second floor, and that would be acceptable. Or you could have obscure glass on the hall window. Why couldn't they have obscure glass up to two feet above the? The floor line of the second floor and then have clear glass above that?
I think that would work out the same because the difference between the landing and the second floor would be roughly five feet. And, and. So the windows are probably not in total five feet high. So um. I, I don't think it would make, uh, it would make a difference.
Okay, um, I guess I, I, I don't understand that, but I'm not an architect, so. Uh, we have a motion before us. I think uh, Commissioner Harris wanted to speak. You have your, you have your mute on, Commissioner Harris. You're muted.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna take us back a little bit to um, the comments of Commissioner Kennedy and Commissioner DeCarty. One thing that was not intuitive to me is the way, given that it's a triangle lot, um, I feel that their. Applicant is further burdened. By the way, we define the size as one of them being the rear, and therefore it has to have a bigger setback. And maybe through the chair, if you wouldn't mind, if I ask staff why, why it is that way, it doesn't feel intuitive to me.
Certainly.
Yeah, certainly, if I, if I may, Commissioner Harris, so this property is unique in that it only has three sides, and essentially. Every property more or less needs a front and a rear. And in this situation, based on the historical, because I remember reviewing this, this lot previously, based on kind of the historical subdivision of this kind of neighborhood. And this lot, in particular. That determination was made because that rear lot that we determined. More or less. Align with the kind of previous. Rear lot line that existed there for the previous parcel, and it also. Align with the neighboring parcel in, in the sense that it abutted their rear. So with those two items under consideration, that's how we made the determination that that side would be the rears, the rear property line, therefore had that twenty-foot rear setback as opposed. To the other side, which we're calling the interior side. But in a nutshell, it needs to have a front and a rear, and the opposite, or the remaining. Side property line. Would be that interior side.
Okay, it feels, it feels like a bigger burden on the applicant. Just make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, I'd like to just follow up on that. I mean. I think that the reason you're saying it needs to have a front or rear is. That if it had a front and only two sideline, two sidelines. The, the setbacks on the sides are smaller than the setbacks on the rear. So a triangular lot with no rear. No rear lot line. Would basically not have a backyard and be able to build closer to the. Edge of the lot on all sides, basically, or on. Two of the three sides. Is that kind of the rationale for requiring a front and a rear line?
Yeah, that's definitely a fair rationale. The intention of the kind of the required side setbacks is to provide kind of that open space around the building. And in, in that sense, twenty-foot front and rear does essentially prescribe that. Kind of open space that, you know, a homeowner. Kind of. A building would need.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner DeCarty?
Yeah, to Commissioner Riggs, the maker of the motion. I support the second part of your motion, giving the owner the freedom to. Adjust the siding and windows as they see fit, once we've approved. I'm a little unclear on the first, and you said lacking a, a view, I think, or a planned view. To be able to see the impact on the neighbors and, and D two. To me, looked like it does that. So I wondered if you had made your motion with that consideration. And I wonder how you then consider that that neighbor. Has said that they like the house and would like to support it going forward. I can appreciate perhaps that neighbor's not going to be there forever. But I wondered, given your concerns. If looking at D two, you might. Clarify the necessity in this instance in your mind of that kind of change.
If you'll give me a moment to uh, pull up D two. Since I can't just flip through. Oh, okay, um. So Noah's site, uh, the, uh, section that I was referring to would go through the stairwell. And across a yard to um. The nearest, say, backyard or nearest uh, bedroom window. And that's not something that's been done, so I can simply estimate that it's about twenty feet. From the stairwell to an adjacent house, maybe twenty-five feet. And so um. Let me see, uh, what is considered plan north is the back. Yeah, so it appears to me. That. That window is in a um. In a position to challenge privacy. And uh, by the way, to Chair Doran, um, I better see your, uh, the point of your question about um. Moving the sill height. And, and whether that would uh, obviate the need for the obscure glass. Which I think it would, um. But it would also be such a dramatic change to that window. That it really didn't occur to me that that would be desirable. So the, the hope was uh, to offer a suggestion of how that um. How that can be solved relatively simply in uni, in, in a uniform way.
So Chair Doran, it would, it would help me to hear from the architect and their views on, on this conversation, if, uh, through the chair, that would be possible.
Certainly. Ms. May?
Hi, thank you. Um, so in considering the design of this addition. We had thought about stairs at the front and bedrooms on the back, but obviously that would impose a privacy issue as well with. Bedrooms having larger windows. So we have located the bedrooms at the front where they are substantially beyond views of neighbors because it's across the street. And that forces the stairs to be located at the back, um. It is the intention to use window treatment because this is a transition point. That the family will have from the public space to their private bedrooms. But as a mom, she would want to be able to look out the window. Make sure her kids are still safe as she's going to do her laundry. And that's why. I strongly believe we cannot just simply raise the sill. For the client to not be able to look at the windows, but she will have window treatment. Is, is that okay?
Actually, I would like to ask a follow-up question on that, um. And maybe I didn't articulate it well to Commissioner Riggs, but. What about the possibility of having obscure glass in the lower portion of the window? But any portion uh, two feet or more above the second story uh, floor level could be clear. Would that uh, address your client's concerns about being able to look out into the rear yard?
This is an issue that has come up countless times. Usually two or three times a year across the last, whatever it's been sixteen years that I've been looking at these, and the uh. The issues uh, are usually the same. If you want to see your backyard from your second floor. You're going to see your neighbor's backyard unless you have specific dedicated and complete screening. You, you know, you, you can't look. North and not see the north. And um. So if you uh. Offered obscure glass uh, in the lower half. You would um. First and foremost, obscure the view of your own backyard. And only to a lesser degree obscure the view to the neighbors. It, I have to admit, it would be wonderful to be able to scan your own property from above. As someone who cleans his own gutters and trims trees above my roof, I am from time to time up, up there on my roof. And take a moment to reflect on what my yard looks like above. I also get down. With a reasonable amount of haste before I make my neighbors feel uncomfortable because I can view quite a number of backyards. And they're not always prepared uh, for, for that, um. So um, it. There, there's sort of no way to um. Have the left hand in the snow and the right hand in the, in the summer sunshine, I guess.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I think we have a hand raised from the applicant. I'd like to let Ms. Alkey speak. You're muted, son.
There we go. Just wanted to say thank you, um. Thank you all for. Bringing up the fact of how hard this project has been. Um, I appreciate all of your comments. I think that um. I'd have so much to say, but. My only comment is with the triangle yard and the massive trees that all of our neighbors have on either side. And the triangle position, it's like we cannot. See anything with how big the trees are. That said. I'm gonna defer to Mi Chang about what she thinks would be most aesthetically pleasing for our house because. We are just thankful to be at this point of the project at this point, um. I would love the window aesthetically, and like she said, to look out there, but I also um. Understand, and sadly, those neighbors are um, in Tennessee right now, visiting their two sons for the first time, so. They would be the ones that would have had the most impact, that had the nicest letter, um. But I'll, I'll wrap it with that and defer back to her, but just um, thank you all for. Listening, so I will mute myself.
Thank you. I would like to let Ms. Mai respond further.
Um, I think to Commissioner Riggs' point, it would require me to um, take a look, a better look at the site. And um, look at the elevations. And I'm sure we could go ahead and do an obscure glass, but I don't want to make a hasty decision right now. And raise the sill height and come back and try to revise it at a different point. So if you will allow me to. Think over this and work with Mr. Tapio. Is that possible?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to just say, uh, before we move on to a vote, um. I think this is one of the rare cases where uh. I actually don't see a problem with a clear glass. We've got the comments, the, there's a support for the neighbors on both sides. And uh, I think uh. We have a motion before us. If there's a second, we'll take a vote, but I would propose a competing motion. Which would not require the obscure glass and leave the windows as is, but. Would contain uh, Commissioner Riggs' other. But first, uh, let's see if we have a second for uh, this motion. Commissioner Riggs, you wanted to speak further?
Yeah, I, I don't want to find myself uh. Repeating myself or. Or going down, um, you know, enumerating every stair tread that it takes to get to a conclusion, um. I appreciate the um, logic that trees can provide privacy, but. We, we have a site plan and the trees are indicated. And there's a twenty-foot gap um. Between the trees. Pretty much adjacent to the stairwell window. And then there's another gap um, over to the other adjacent property that's, that's notably less, but. A gap is a gap and a twenty-foot gap is a big gap, and um, I do not make my point casually. Feel free to ignore my input, um. And that's all I'll have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Mai, you still have your hand raised? Did you want to speak further? Okay, um, do we have a second for the motion before us?
Uh, can Chair Doran, just as a point of order, don't we have two motions before us?
No.
Okay, so you, you have not made a motion. Okay.
I've not made a motion. I've just said what I will do if we don't have a second or if this motion doesn't carry.
Thank you very much.
So do we have a second? Seeing none, the motion fails. I'm gonna propose a motion from the chair. I believe I'm allowed to do that, uh. Ms. Sandmeyer, my parliamentarian, will correct me if I'm not. And that would be to uh. To. Propose the approval as uh. As applied, uh, as the application reads, with the exception of uh, Commissioner Riggs' first condition, which is an option to. Uh, conform the windows and the siding, uh, if the homeowners decide to do that, uh, further into the construction process. Do we have a second for that motion? Mr. DeCarty?
Yes, I'll second that if, as long as it's clear enough for staff, um, on the direction about the windows and siding, like, I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Tapia, is that clear enough?
Yeah, just to clarify and confirm. It's the first floor siding as noted in the staff report, the siding and the windows. To match the proposed second floor, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs? That was a no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I will vote yes, so the motion carries uh, four one. Just before we close this matter, I, I'd like to make one further comment. I really. Appreciate the efforts on the windows on this application. Actually, I think the side windows in particular. Were well done to not give us cause for concern. I just want to commend the architect on that. So uh, it's approved as uh, as the optional amendment as stated four to one, and we will move on to the next matter. Thank you. So our next matter is associated with a single staff report. We've got environmental impact report and a study session. And I believe we have Mr. Paz for this staff report. Did you want to propose an order for consideration, or should I read um? F two for the public hearing?
I think to start, uh, Chair Doran, if you can read the, read the item, and then there is a. A presentation by staff that will kind of go through our recommended approach to the, the two public hearing. Items before us tonight.
Okay, so I will move on to F two on our agenda, an environmental impact report scoping session. Uh, applicant, uh, Jason Chang. Applicant Jason Chang at 1075 O'Brien Drive and 20 Kelly Court, referred to as CS Bio Phase Three Project. So a request for environmental review for an amended and restated conditional development permit, CDP, and below market rate BMR housing agreement for the construction of a new seven-story research and development R and D and office building, approximately 100,000 square feet of gross floor area in size with a ground floor restaurant, food court, commercial space on a two parcel site in the LSB Life Sciences Bonus zoning district. A new five-level parking structure would be constructed on 20 Kelly Court. Existing one-story warehouse building on 1075 O'Brien Drive and the two-story portion of the R and D building at 20 Kelly Court would be demolished. The three-story portion of the R and D building at 20 Kelly Court is proposed to remain and a new hazardous materials and utility yard attached to the building would be constructed. The proposed project includes a request for the storage and use of hazardous materials for emergency backup generator and for the use of hazardous materials for future research and development processes. The proposed project would include a BMR agreement for the city's ordinance and guidelines. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height and floor area ratio, FAR, under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project also includes a lot merger to merge the two existing parcels. Both parcels would be governed by the amended and restated CDP. An initial study has been prepared and is included with the notice of preparation, NOP, for the proposed project. The NOP and initial study were released on Friday, August 27, 2021. The initial study scopes out the following environmental topics from further review. Aesthetics, agricultural and forestry resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, public services, recreation and utilities and service systems. The focused EIR will address potential physical environmental effects of the proposed project that have not been scoped out as outlined in the California Environmental Quality SEQA in the following areas. Air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, population, housing and transportation. The city is requesting comments on the scope and content of the focused EIR. Project location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to section 6596.2 of the government code. Comments on the scope and content of the focused EIR are due by 5:30 PM on Monday, September 27, 2021. So we have a staff report from Mr. Paz. Do you have anything further to add to the staff report?
One update to the staff report and then also to the, the NOP. We, we did update the end time for the collection of comments. So you'll notice in the agenda, the end time is 5:30 PM on Monday, September 27. And so that is, that is an update from the NOP, which lists 5:00 PM, 5:30 is the, the closing time. So business continues at the city until 5:30 on, on a Monday, unlike five on a, on a Friday. And so there's an update there.
Thank you for that. Do we have questions for Mr. Paz on the report before we go on? Not seeing any. So I believe we have a joint presentation on the scoping session and on the study session. So I think we we will go to that joint presentation now and then have public comment after the presentation. Is that how we normally do it, Mr. Paz?
Yes, and I, I was excited and then concerned because our, our staff presentation appeared and, and disappeared before our eyes here. So if that can come back, thank you. And then we can, we can kind of walk through a high level overview of the project site, which will provide the context for this item and then the, the following public hearing for the, for the study session. Great, so. Thank you. And then I think it's just attempting to full screen. There we go. I learned a new shortcut this evening. So here we're presenting the CS Bio Phase Three Project. Tonight we have two public hearings. The first is an environmental impact report scoping session. And the second is a study session for the, the project at 1075 O'Brien Drive and 20 Kelly Court. As a brief project overview, as the, as the chair noted, the proposed project would construct a new seven-story R and D office and ground floor restaurant building in the LSB Life Sciences Bonus District. The project would also construct a new five-level parking structure. And then there would be modifications to existing buildings at the 20 Kelly Court site to demolish a two-story portion of the building and maintain the three-story R and D building that's there currently. It would also construct the 3,500 square foot hazmat and, or hazardous materials and utility storage yard. You can see that the project site is located on O'Brien Drive, east of the O'Brien Drive and Willa Road intersection. This area is part of the Life Sciences District and on this next slide, we have an excerpt from the zoning map in this area. The adjacent properties to the subject site are also zoned LSB. So that's the bonus development overlay for the Life Sciences District on the north side of O'Brien. Properties on the south side of O'Brien Drive are zoned LS or Life Sciences. And those are adjacent to residential uses in East Powell Alto, which you can see a little bit more clearly in this aerial. There are, in addition to, in addition to life science uses, there are a few non-industrial or life science uses in, in this area, including some private schools. So there's a private school to the east of the project site that's described in detail in the staff report. And that's the, the Wonder School or Open Mind School. And then catty corner to the project site, you can see there's a a green field over the hedge, hedgey right of way. And that's the, the playing fields for the Mid Peninsula High School, which is another school to the north, northwest of the project site. And then, as I mentioned, across O'Brien Drive and further to the south, there are residential properties in East Powell Alto. And then further to the east, you can see where the development pattern changes in the aerial that the, there are also residential uses in that area as well. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to, to solicit feedback from the commission and also from the public on two elements of this project. So there's two public hearings. The first is for an environmental impact EIR scoping session. And that's an opportunity for the public and the commission to comment on the, the EIR topics that were identified to be studied and the scope of the EIR. And we have a the consultant that's preparing the EIR, ICF is here with us and they'll speak to that in more detail. And then in the second public hearing, we'll discuss the actual project elements, including architectural design, site access, layout, public open space and their proposed community amenity. And that will be again in the second public hearing, which is the study session for the project. We wanted to note that there will be no actions taken by the commission this evening. And then encourage both the commission commissioners and the members of the public who do provide input this evening to, to focus the input during the first portion on the EIR, the scope of the EIR and the environmental document and then reserve design related comments or comments about the project more generally for the study session to follow. Staff recommends that we adopt the following meeting format. So at the close of this presentation, I will turn it over to the applicant to present on the project as a, as a whole. And then we'll turn to the EIR consultant, ICF, to walk us through where we are in the environmental review process with respect to the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. What the initial study saw, what we'll be studying in, in the EIR and kind of where we're going to go from here. I will then take public comment. There'll be an opportunity for questions from the commissioner of staff or the applicant or ICF, the EIR consultant. And then we'll record the commissioner comments. And then close the public, the public hearing for the scoping session. For the public hearing for the scoping session, we do have a court reporter with us. So everything that I'm saying very quickly now will be transcribed and available with the minutes of this meeting later on. Following the close of the scoping session, public hearing will move to the study session where we will not be presenting on the project again. So we'll take the applicant's presentation from the, the first round and, and use that throughout the evening. But there will be an opportunity for public comment on the study session as well as commissioner questions and we will field and record comments. With that, I, I thank you and I, I turn it over to Kirsten Chapman with, or sorry, Jason Chang with, with CS Bio for the applicant presentation.
All right, before we do that, I'd like to clarify one thing. If you could go back to the sec, the last slide before your closing slide with the, the order.
Yes, I believe I can.
There's one thing on the air that is different from our usual procedure, which is the order of questions from the commission. I think normally we have questions on the report from the commission first, then we have public comments. And then we have commissioner comments. So you've got public comments before commissioner questions. I think we normally do it in the reverse.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll turn to the okay, I, I'm hearing that there, there's an opportunity for clarifying questions before before the comments, before public comments. So we will certainly hold that, that time and make that available to the commissioners.
Okay.
But the detailed comments and discussion should come after the the public comment.
Sure. Okay, proceed.
Great. So then I will turn it over to Jason Chang, the project sponsor with CS Bio.
You're on mute, Mr. Chang?
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time this evening. And for the opportunity to speak about CS Bio Space Three Project. CS Bio is a peptide contract manufacturer that has been based in Menlo Park since 2003. The primary focus of CS Bio is to manufacture peptide drug substance for the pharmaceutical industry. We currently have around 90 employees based in Menlo Park and Nopitas. The purpose of our phase three construction is to spin off a couple of new businesses that we've been incubating over the years. One of them is focused on neoantigen peptide vaccines, which are personalized medicines that we're manufacturing for cancer patients. So our core business is to provide bulk API, which is active pharmaceutical ingredient drug substance for diabetes, cardiovascular, various oncology diseases. One of the businesses that we've been incubating over the last five years is personalized medicine where every patient is getting 16 unique drugs to their specific tumor. As, as part of that, we've also been incubating other businesses, which is the idea behind the new facility. With that being said, happy to address any additional comments at a later stage. And I could turn the presentation over to Nile with GGA to talk about the building we're proposing in detail.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present CS Bio's project at 20 Kelly Court and 1075 O'Brien. The project consists of the demolition of two existing buildings and the construction of a five-level parking garage and a seven-story office and life science building of approximately 100,000 square feet. We are seeking the bonus density and the bonus height, which are within the, the limits. So I think you're so this exhibit shows the existing and proposed conditions for 1075 O'Brien and 20 Kelly Court, the existing obviously on the left. The single-story high bay warehouse at the intersection of O'Brien and Kelly Court. And then the two structures at the back, the, the two-story building that was built in the 60s, two-story building that was built about seven years ago. So we're proposing to modify that as I described with the five-story garage and a seven-story life science building. Just showing the number of parking spaces and how they're dispersed. There's a limited number of parking spaces available at the surface. The majority of the parking spaces are in the garage. For you with the details here. So these exhibits are showing the existing conditions of the building. So this is the 20 Kelly Court building. The older 1960 building is in the gray. The newer 2014 building is in the blue. And then on the right-hand side, we have the hazmat storage and service yard. And that's actually a rollover condition from the last amendment in 2014 that's being fulfilled as part of this application. Elevations and floor plans of the existing high bay warehouse. And then these are the diagrammatic floor plans of the proposed office life science building to replace it. And we do have a roof garden at, at the roof level accessible via stair and an elevator that's limited in area and it's recessed below the roof line. So that provides the code required full protection. Floor plans of the parking garage. This is a five-level garage. We have some bike storage on the ground floor. There's two elevators and an egress stair at the end of the cul-de-sac. And a proposed pedestrian walkway to connect the garage to the fourth level of the building. There's about a two-foot difference between the two. This, this massing shows proposed and future development. So obviously our project is highlighted in color at, at the corner of O'Brien and Kelly Courts. There's the Charlton Project immediately to the right or to the east and the future development to the north. This is another view kind of coming around to see the street-facing elevation along Kelly. That's the, the main elevation of the building. And we have some additional views where we're isolating just the building. So it's a, a seven-story building. The seventh floor is set back from the lower mass of six stories. Here's the, here's the primary elevation. Front and Kelly Court. We have a kind of a tiered level of massing. The first floor has a lot of transparency to the proposed food court amenity. There's a canopy down there. Then we have a couple of floors proposed for office use. That's glazed differently than the upper floors, which are proposed for life science or R and D use. The, the garage is intentionally blank right now. When we presented to you two years ago, we actually had Christian Moeller, the artist who did the hands on the parking structure at the San Jose Airport. He will be conducting a community outreach and, and design effort when we get into the construction documents prior to plan. when we get into the construction documents prior to plancha to come up with a custom and community inputted design. And this is the key spacing side of the 1075 building on the left. The existing 20 Kelly Court building on the right. And another view, elevated view looking at the 1075 building. Landscape, so we have we have an outdoor seating area between the building and O'Brien that's available to the public as well as outdoor seating for diners who are frequenting the proposed food amenity. And we have a row of trees down Kelly Court and some smaller trees around the parking garage. This is just a detail showing enlargements of the outdoor seating area fronting O'Brien and then the upper left corner is a little bit muddy, but that's the blow up of the roof garden. Perhaps a little small to see, these are just some of the proposed trees. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission now? I think we have a report from the EIR consultant next.
That is correct. Chair Dorn, so we'll now turn it over to Kirsten Chapman with ICF for the the presentation from our EIR consultant. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kirsten Chapman. I am the project manager with ICF and I do have a presentation. So when that pops up, I will start my presentation. Okay, great. Do I have? Okay. Good, good evening commissioners and members of the public. Thank you for joining the scoping session for the CS Bio Phase 3 project. My name is Kirsten Chapman and I work with for the environmental consulting firm ICF. We will be preparing the environmental review component for the project. I'm the project manager. Also here tonight with us is Ling Jin from Hexagon. And should you have any questions after the presentation regarding the environmental review process? We will take note and then also we can respond to them accordingly. So my presentation will cover the scoping process and the environmental process. I will also explain how to submit comments on the scope of the EIR and describe the next steps. So our EIR team consists of the city of Menlo Park as the lead agency, meaning that they have the principal responsibility for carrying out the project. ICF will be the lead EIR consultant and we will prepare all sections of the EIR with assistance from Hexagon for the transportation analysis and Kaiser Marston Associates for the housing needs assessment. So the project site is within the Connect Menlo study area. The Connect Menlo EIR was prepared as a programmatic EIR, which simplifies the EIR process for future projects by incorporating it by reference in the analysis and discussions from the programmatic EIR. By tearing from Connect Menlo EIR, the environmental analysis for this project will rely on the Connect Menlo EIR for the following: general background and setting, overall growth-related issues, issues that were evaluated in the Connect Menlo EIR for which there are no significant new information that would require further analysis, assessment of cumulative impacts, and also mitigation measures that were previously adopted and incorporated in the Connect Menlo EIR. However, due to the 2017 City of East Palo Alto versus City of Menlo Park settlement agreement, certain topics are required to be fully analyzed in the project-level EIR, regardless of substantive, subsequent activities found to be within the scope of the programmatic EIR. So this slide shows the general steps involved with the SEQA process for the project. The NOP, along with the initial study, which we will discuss next, was released on July 30th. The NOP comment period closes, oh, sorry, sorry. The initial study, yes, was released on, sorry, August 27th and the notice of preparation also on August 27th. And tonight we're doing the scoping meeting. And the comment period closes at the end of the month. Following the close of the scoping period, we will begin preparing the draft EIR. When the EIR is released for public review, a public hearing will be held to solicit comments on the adequacy of the draft EIR. A final EIR will then be prepared that will address all of the comments received during the draft EIR review period. A certification hearing for the final EIR will be held before the planning commission and city council. And after the EIR is certified, then the project can be approved. Following approval of the project, a notice of determination will be issued. So initial study was prepared to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of the project and determine what level of analysis is required. The initial study was prepared to disclose the relevant impacts and mitigation measures covered in the Connect Menlo EIR. The initial study also discussed whether the project is within the parameters of the Connect Menlo EIR. Based on the checklist, the following topics will be scoped out from further review in the EIR: aesthetics, agricultural resources, historic resources, geology and soils, hazards, hydrology, land use, mineral resources, and public services. Due to the due to the 2017 settlement agreement with East Palo Alto, the focused EIR will be prepared. The EIR is a tool for identifying physical impacts to the environment by using the analysis conducted by our EIR team. The EIR will also be used to inform the public and the decision-makers about the prior, the project prior to project approval, recommended ways to reduce impacts and to consider alternatives to lessen identified physical impacts that are considered for the project. So as shown here, air quality, biological resources, specifically special status species and nesting sites, archaeological and tribal resources, greenhouse gas, noise, and traffic will all be analyzed in the EIR. In addition, alternatives to the projects will be analyzed to potentially reduce identified impacts. SEQA guidelines requires the evaluation of a no-project alternative and other alternatives will be considered based on the results of the impacts of the project. And these will comply with SEQA. So the purpose of our scoping session is to gather public input, identify key environmental issues. I do early identification of possible mitigation measures and to consider possible project alternatives. Although my presentation, although I do want to, I do want to note that the intent of the SEQA meeting tonight, as well as the scoping phase, is not to focus on the project itself or its merits, but instead comments should be focused on the environmental impacts of the project. So submitting comments. You can submit comments on the scope of the EIR via email or letter to Ori Paz, Associate Planner for the City of Menlo Park Planning Division. You can also speak tonight and we will note your comments and consider them during the preparation of the draft EIR. As noted in the slide, all comments must be received by September 27th at 5:30, 5:30 PM. So yes, thank you for joining tonight and we look forward to receiving your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. I do have a clarifying question. So this environmental impact report is to include population and housing. And as a result, the 2017 settlement with East Palo Alto, housing needs assessment will be prepared in connection with this report. So you know, there's no housing in this, in this project. That assessment is to assess the impact of the additional office space on housing acquired in the vicinity, including East Palo Alto. Is that?
Correct. Well, we will analyze, yes, the induced population that's induced by the employees generated by the project. And we will determine how many employees are anticipated to live in the city of Menlo Park and then also in the surrounding area. The housing needs assessment is not a SEQA requirement to be prepared, but it will be used to guide us in the preparation of the population housing section.
Thank you. Do we have other clarifying questions for Ms. Chapman? I don't see any. So Mr. Paz, I think we move to public comments on the scoping session now. And we will ask the public to withhold comments on the architecture and things that are within the purview of the study session. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chair.
Okay, Mr. Tapia, do we have any hands raised for public comments?
Yes, Chair Dorn, I do see a hand raised. I'd like to introduce at this time Jenny Michael. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name and address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organization affiliation. So Ms. Michael, I will now unmute you and you now have the ability to speak.
Okay, good evening, commissioners and chair. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I just had one quick question. Based on the information that you just spoke about, I wasn't sure that this was a part of the scope. But I believe that the proposed project is in a liquefaction zone. And with the storage and maintenance, oh, I'm sorry, I should have stated that I'm on 565 Willow Road, number nine down the street from you. And I don't have any affiliation with this project. But I'm just curious in terms of the hazardous waste being in a liquefaction zone in the event of an emergency such as a tsunami or an earthquake or some sort of other, you know, unforeseen event. I'm just curious what the, you know, how the storage of those chemicals will be addressed in this review process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do we have other hands raised now?
At this time, I do not see any additional hands raised. Maybe we can give it a minute. Just as a reminder, if you do have a comment for public comment, click the raise hand icon on your screen.
Do we have any other public comments, Mr. Turner?
I do not see any additional hands at this time.
Okay, I'd like to close public comments this time and bring it back to our virtual dais for comments from the commission. I will note before we begin that we've had a request from staff to hear from all of the commission. I confess on some of these things, my rule of thumb is to follow the old adage that it's better to remain silent, be suspected of being a fool than to open your mouth and remove all doubt. So I've tried to not comment in the past when I felt like I didn't have anything substantive to add to the excellent comments from my fellow commissioners. But the staff would like to hear from all of us. So if everyone could keep that in mind as we go forward this evening, they would appreciate that. So having said that, do we have commissioners who'd like to speak at this time? Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Commissioner Dorn. My understanding is we're just commenting on the EIR process. And I had kind of an overall global question or point that maybe could be taken into the EIR analysis. And that is that I went back and listened to the 2019 Planning Commission meeting when this, when the applicant made a presentation before I was on the commission. And one of the points that he made, when I think the commission was looking at how much office there was, was that the needs of biotech have changed and now more office-type space is needed versus lab space since more of the research and analysis is done outside the lab setting and consists of more kind of big data analysis. And as I look at where, where that this is in the, the R and D bio area, I'm a little bit concerned if we're going down this path where a lot of these, we, we think that all of these are going to be R and D level and therefore have fewer employees and fewer offices. And yet, over time, if that's not really the case, we are going to have more offices and fewer labs and thus more workers, more need for parking, more traffic, all of those items. So I just thought, you know, as you're looking at the EIR process and you're looking at alternatives, it might be, I would like to see an understanding of what an alternative would be if there were less office and more lab and just kind of think about that as we go forward with this project and others. Thank you.
Thank you. I was on mute there. You are correct. We're supposed to be commenting on the scope of the EIR session at this time. I think that that comment was on the scope of the EIR session, so it's appropriate. But just for everyone to keep in mind, we will have a study session immediately following this to talk about architecture and other issues. Do we have other commissioners wishing to speak now, Mr. Riggs?
Thank you. I actually have a comment in the same vein as Commissioner Harris. And that is that whatever one may feel about the Connect Menlo effort and its enactment by council without the support of the planning commission, it has moved forward. And we have seen that the results of development here absent any new traffic infrastructure, infrastructure were dramatic prior to the COVID restrictions. I think it's fair to assume as we approve new office space that the office space is not being built with the vision of it being empty except for a Zoom monitor. I think we have to accept that this building and the buildings that are currently vacated will be occupied. And there's a certain traffic condition that exists right now in the afternoons that is fairly notable. And that is during a situation when many large office buildings are empty. I think one can draw one's own conclusions about the coming reoccupancy of the buildings. So. the coming reoccupancy of the buildings. So I would like to suggest that an alternative studied in the EIR would be one that has the specific goal of 100% diversion of all new traffic as a result of this project. In other words, the traffic that existed in 2019 from the existing buildings would be as great or or at least as great as the traffic resulting from this project. So that is, that is my rather strong suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask a question actually from Ms. Chapman regarding the public comment that we got. I think the speaker made a good point about the dangers of having hazardous materials in liquefaction zone. But I do see in our staff report that soils and geography are supposed to be scoped out of this environmental impact report. So I'd just like you to comment on whether there's any, there's any scope to consider that question in the EIR report.
Yes, thank you. That is, that is a great question. We are not considering at this time to include this issue in the environmental impact report. It is in the initial study. On page 3-55 of the initial study, we do discuss liquefaction. There was a geotechnical investigation prepared for the project site and we did review, do a peer review of that and incorporate it into our document and the findings were that the, the chance of liquefaction is actually low. But of course, the proposed project would be designed and constructed to meet or exceed local standards as well as the current California Building Standards Code and then also all codes that pertain to the storage of hazardous materials. So it was determined that the impacts would be less than significant for liquefaction and then also hazardous material storage.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners that want to speak at this time? Mr. DeCarty?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to congratulating CS Bio first on being an important part of our community for nearly 20 years and for their growth and development and their work. It's been fabulous to have them still be here and to see this project through. On the EIR, I do have a couple of questions, I think, for Ms. Chapman. And starting with, I wanted to understand on page 10 in the staff report, when it lists under the greenhouse gas emissions. I have questions about transportation that will echo some of my fellow Commissioners, but this is on the other piece about the potential appeal to the city's reach code for potential use of natural gas or space heating and for the for-profit restaurant, which I would imagine would be cooking. How are you examining that from an EIR standpoint?
That is a great question. I actually I'm not sure at this time because we have not quite considered GHG yet. But the reach code. Yes, I'm sorry, I can't answer what, what we're planning to do for the EIR, but it will certainly be addressed and considered. Perhaps mitigation measures will be needed.
Fair enough. I understand. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'll just, my, my, my comment on that is that from a straight greenhouse gas emissions reduction is pretty straightforward. We have a reach code which says no new natural gas, which means you have no emissions from methane from the leakage all the way through to the burning. And so you're going to find that. So I don't, I'm just perplexed about why it's presented that way in the staff report and what the purpose is. If there's an appeal that there's an economic hardship for the project in some way, that's a different conversation in that mix. So I'll just say, maybe this is through to staff, but I just don't understand what the purpose of its inclusion in that way is for the purpose of the EIR. Then I want to echo, and I do again, Ms. Chapman, I guess I have questions for you on the transportation impacts. I'm not going to go into this very long, but I've said this multiple times now, our ERA process, EIR process is broken. Our community cannot use the material in order to be able to provide input. It's not useful to them. EIRs are supposed to be for sunshine. The simplest way to help our community is where Commissioner Riggs was going, which is on the alternate projects. And it's simply not acceptable to have the project be included, the non-project be included, which is mandated. And then sometimes we see a maximum use project. So we end up with the Goldilocks where the, lo and behold, the current project as proposed is the porch that is just right. And that's not helpful to anybody. And I'm at the point where I am not going to vote that an EIR is adequate, if that's all we see. So I very much agree and strongly agree that we need to see an alternate project in this EIR that gets at the issues we continue to see again and again at the community level, which the comments of Commissioners Harris and Commissioner Riggs touched on, which is the transportation impacts in that community directly. And so my question is, in that scoping, in doing transportation analysis, it would be looking at reducing transportation impacts along the lines of Commissioner Riggs described. What are the levers that you look at in your analyses of transportation when you're trying to examine the potential difficulty or impacts of reduced traffic, of reduced vehicle trips?
So I'm going to turn this question over to our transportation consultant, Ms. Ling from Hexagon.
Great, thank you.
Hi, this is Elaine from Hexagon Transportation Consultants. For, to reduce the, the, to, right now, all the transportation impact is based on vehicle mile traveled. So basically, if you want to mitigate the product's impact according to the vehicle mile traveled, there are different ways, like reduce a number of vehicle trips or even reduce the trip plans. There are like multiple matters, like transportation management programs that you can apply.
So you're going to, right now, what we look at at these in our projects is a TDM that is at 20% below some baseline. You could look at a transportation demand management plan, excuse me, that would ratchet that down 40, 60, 80, 100% and look at it, that would be one of the levers. Is that what you're saying?
That's depends, like, depends on the requirement of the city or the, what the applicant will do.
Okay, I don't understand that at all. If the point is to actually come up with an alternative that reduces the traffic, what does it matter what the city says they'll do and what the applicant says they will do?
If you want to reduce the traffic, that's like reduce the product size, that's one of them. Or you can reduce the vehicle trips, like promote different transport, like public transportation mode or even promote like bicycle trips.
Okay, I think I've, I hope I made my point, but I'm still confused on that answer. The other thing I assume we can do is we can look at not having parking. I mean, the simplest thing to do to keep a single vehicle car from coming to a place is to not have a place for it to park. Is that something that you would look at?
I think this product need to provide the required parking, right, based on the city zoning code. So I'm not sure whether you can like just reduce the parking to zero. That will not comply with the city zoning code.
What's the? I'll just say, I appreciate you saying that. And I'll just say to staff, I find this thoroughly frustrating. So we're just spinning around in circles. If we can't actually look at the environmental impact of something and reducing it without having to be constrained to what the current city code is, what good is that?
The, when you look at the, the transportation impact, there is some like threshold based on the city's traffic impact guidelines. For the, for the mitigation, you just need to bring the impact below the threshold, not reduce the, like, the like reduce the product to zero.
All right, so I'm just one planning commissioner, but I'll say right here that I'm not going to say that an EIR is adequate if we get it back to us that doesn't look at something like Commissioner Riggs was suggesting. And if it's a bunch of bureaucracy that prohibits that from happening, I think that's outrageous. So that's my comment on that aspect of the IR. Then I have one other question, which is, in looking at the greenhouse gas emissions, do you look at the embedded carbon emissions in the cement and steel that goes into building a parking structure?
Yes, we, we put all of, we get all of the construction information from the applicant, which includes the building materials and that is all put into the model. And then the model is run and analyzed for operation.
And so we'd be able to see an alternative that would not have a parking garage, so we'd understand the greenhouse gas emissions impacts of that?
So, so alternatives would be mainly, they're mainly focused to reduce significant and unavoidable environmental impact. If it is determined that the greenhouse gas emissions from the parking garage is the factor for the fact that the greenhouse gases would be significant and unavoidable, then we, we would look at that. So we will see the results of the model, but I have not seen a project where that is the case.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ms. Chapman. I know your hands are tied on this. You're doing what you're supposed to in this, but I'll again say getting an EIR back that is done in that way is useless for our community and for our residents to be able to have input about what alternatives could be. And we're just throwing away a ton of money on process that doesn't help us. And that's the end of my comments on the EIR tonight. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. I would actually like to ask a question to staff, I think, Mr. Paz, and you can hand this off to consultants if you think it's appropriate. But following up on Mr. DeCarty's questions. Is it actually possible for us to require a condition of approval that traffic be reduced below the existing condition? Or are we constrained to consider incremental traffic?
So if I understand the question, it would be a condition of approval that the Planning Commission would be recommending that the city council adopt that the project not, basically like a no net increase in is it trips?
That's a possibility, but I think the question is actually directed, my, my question was directed to question whether we could require a decrease in traffic. There's a, there's a certain amount of traffic associated with existing conditions on the property. Is it something that, you're right, it would be a recommendation, city council. Could, could city council on a recommendation require reduction in traffic beyond the existing condition? As a condition of approval for the project?
So I'm, I'm getting some information that the, it's actually the TIA guidelines that would analyze the congestion. And then those would analyze the impacts and then recommend improvements to not increase traffic where feasible. But I think to the, the underlying question, the city council can apply conditions of approval. If I'm not mistaken, I'll turn to either the planning commission is on Karina Sandmeyer, or I believe our principal planner Kyle Prada is with us as well to confirm that underlying question.
Okay, so can we request for this environmental impact report that it investigate you know, possible ways of achieving that? Is that appropriate for the scope of the environmental impact report?
So thank you, Chair Dorn. There's a distinction we need to make first, and that is that the city has adopted TIA guidelines. So there's there's the California Environmental Quality Act, so that uses BMD vehicle miles traveled as your threshold of significance for transportation related impacts. So that's changed. We used to use congestion, right, level of service, traffic, intersection delay. Our TIA guidelines still include an analysis of level of service and congestion from a project. And so you'll, you've probably seen, you definitely have seen in the few projects I've gone through recently, the recommended conditions of approval for intersection improvements to bring a project's potential impact to an intersection back to pre-project condition or existing conditions. So you'll see those, you know, might be adding a turn lane, might be signal operation changes. But the idea there is that it would increase, it would reduce the congestion, not the trips though. So if you're getting to the net new trips question, that's a, a much broader question, much bigger policy question for the, the Planning Commission and the council to consider. Certainly, it could be looked at in the environmental impact report. We need to think about that a little bit for where it might fit in, and I'm not prepared to give a yes or no on that, but we'll certainly consider the comment if you're talking about no net trips. But I do want to make the distinction between trips, congestion, and VMT, if that, if that helps anything here.
That does help. I, I would like to make the request that the scoping, that the environmental impact report does investigate all of those vehicle miles traveled, net trips, as well as congestion, so that we have you know, we have some data available to make a policy choice, us and the city council when the time comes. So, you know, there's requests for input from the planning commission. That would be my input on that question.
Certainly duly noted. And so just to, just to clarify, that all that information would be in the report. The, the vehicle miles traveled would be evaluated or estimated. And then the net increase in trips would be shown in a, in the report because that, that's how we deal with the trip generation for the project and crediting back the existing conditions. So you would see that net increase regardless of whether there was a potential policy decision whether or not there should be an increase in trips or not. So that information will be there for decision makers through the EIR and through the TIA, the transportation impact analysis.
Thank you. And then following up on another of Mr. DeCarty's comments. Can we request that the environmental impact report consider alternatives other than you know, the application and a maximal project permitted on the site? So that there are, you know, sort of realistic alternatives that are considered in detail in the environmental impact report, so that we have something more meaningful to compare the existing conditions with when it comes, the project comes up for approval. Can we ask for that in this environmental impact report?
So I'm, I believe so, and I'll just turn to Kirsten Chapman to kind of confirm that parameters for including alternatives in the EIR.
Yeah, so for the EIR, when we consider alternatives, the alternatives are really focused on what is going to reduce environmental impacts. And they also have to be feasible. So we can't just analyze a project that will not be feasible for the applicant to move forward. If it's too small, if let's say it's determined that there's no parking, no employees would want to work there, then their project would not be viable. We won't analyze a project that the applicant would not be able to move forward with. So it needs to be a realistic alternative. There could be something like a variant, which the applicant could consider instead of the project. They could move forward with a different component of the project. Variants aren't necessarily there to reduce environmental impacts. They are, they're just as an option, but that is usually for larger projects that are a little unsure about how they're going to proceed. So they do have those options, but the intent of CCO alternatives analysis is to analyze a realistic alternative that could actually move forward that would reduce environmental impacts.
Thank you. Well, I understand that you can't consider alternatives that are not feasible, but I guess that begs the question of who decides what? But uh, I guess that begs the question of who decides what's a feasible alternative? Uh, who gets to propose what the alternatives are that are considered? Uh, are you restricted to considering alternatives that the applicant proposes? That's a question from this chap, I think.
No, we are not restricted to uh what the applicant proposes, but we do, we do uh definitely consider uh what the applicant could move forward with, uh because there really is no point to consider an alternative that the applicant would not be willing to move forward with and would just uh pull the application. Uh, so we do definitely work closely with the applicant through the city, because we don't have direct contact with the applicant uh to make sure that what we are proposing is actually feasible.
So alternatives would be alternatives that were proposed by the applicants or proposed by city staff? Is that?
It is city staff, um, and you know, in consultation with uh the EIR consultants, which would be ICF. Um, and then we do present those, or I believe we present them to the city and then the city. Sorry, the city would um present them to the applicant to make sure that they are feasible. But uh, there is coordination with the applicant. Potentially, uh, Mr. Paz could weigh in on that, because as I mentioned, uh, us as SEQA consultants in the city of Menlo Park, we don't actually have direct uh contact with the applicant. But I do believe that um, there is um coordination with the applicant to make sure that we can move forward with the alternatives.
Thank you. So a question from Mr. Paz. Is this the only and last chance for the commission to suggest alternatives for consideration? Or is there uh, you know, an opportunity for further input from the commission in determining what alternatives are actually studied under the uh EIR?
So I believe if we can identify alternatives and now, um, sorry, we will, we'll need to identify the alternatives. If the commission is is seeking an alternative to be studied, uh, we'll need to, we'll need to note that tonight. Or sorry, before September 27th at 5:30, uh, we would need that, that information. That's, that's what's going to help us to uh modify the scope of this EIR during this scoping session.
So um, given that we don't have a meeting before September 27th at 5:30, and we're sort of constrained by the Brown Act from doing anything as a body other than in a public meeting, this is our chance to propose alternatives for study. This is really our last chance for pose alternatives for study. Is that correct?
So I'll turn to Principal Planner Coprata to to weigh in on on that question in a little more detail.
So as a commission as a body, yes, tonight is your, your meeting, your public hearing where you can provide verbal comments to staff for consideration. I wanted to take a step back, though, and just identify that the city and its consultant ICF have not done the the detailed full analysis in the environmental impact report yet, right? So what we're doing here is really a brainstorming session, if you will, in identifying possible alternatives. I think a lot of them have raised a lot of the policy alternatives, such as reduced parking, reduced trips. Um, you know, congestion, even though it's not a SEQA thing, there there may be other ways where trips and congestion are tied to VMT. So we, I think we're hearing a lot of the themes tonight, and that that's helpful for us. E- each commissioner may, on their own accord, provide written comments to Ori separately prior to the 27th. If there are things that come up um outside of the meeting in your review of the initial study, the notes of preparation, and anything that you would like us to consider. But I want to stress that this is a information gathering, an idea gathering um session, really, on what could be potential alternatives to be studied in the EIR. Certainly, we need to do the analysis first. If there is a potentially significant unavoidable impact, that would be the focus of the alternative. Whether that's transportation related, greenhouse gas emissions related, air quality related, um, noise. You know, those topic areas are being studied, cultural resources, those are being studied. Those would be the ones that we would focus on if there was a potentially significant impact in one of those topic areas. Because that is the point of an alternative, is to reduce that potentially significant impact to less than significant with mitigation. Uh, the other thing is if there isn't a significant unavoidable impact, then we would look at these policy level alternatives, which I think is a lot of what we're talking about tonight. We'll certainly feed these into the the consideration for any potentially significant unavoidable impact as well. Does that kind of help clarify?
That does.
Process for tonight? I just want to make sure we're not getting into the the details about number of parking spaces, when the idea is to kind of get um bigger picture topics for us to consider with our consultant.
No, it is helpful. Um, that clarifies it for me. Thank you. Do we have other commissioners, uh, Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. Um, pardon me for continuing on this same discussion, but I think the point to make to our consultant is that, uh, and and please respond to me if I'm making an incorrect assumption here, that an alternative could be proposed that simply requires as the definition of the alternative, that there be zero increased trips compared with the baseline, uh, which would be 2019 occupied existing buildings. And if that means a diversion program of 100%, then so it is. I don't think it's up to the EIR to define how that diversion program is done. The hitch here is that the EIR consultant is, pardon the phrase, programmed to provide us with a document that shows what is uh minor impact, mitigatable impact, and an unavoidable in impact. They don't have a category for unacceptable in impact. If uh, if we recognize that the existing zoning and the underlying EIR recognize that our goals are what they were in 2016, then there will be no impetus from staff or the EIR consultants to actually provide the alternative that um two commissioners here tonight have requested. I think the only way we get that alternative is saying specifically, I know the bolt and the nut don't necessarily fit, but I want to see the bolt and the nut presented on the parts tray. Thank you. And so um, we would be requesting, and I am specifically requesting that there is an alternative that states there will be no increase in vehicular traffic, so that we can see what that is. Um, and an example that I give is that there is a TDM program that says there shall, that there shall be 100% diversion. It's not as if that's impossible. I don't think that our request should be offered to the applicant to void. I don't think that serves the purpose of uh, as uh Mr. DeCarty refers to it, this sunshine effort. And I don't think it serves the community's decision-making process. I I don't want to imply here that no project should be built under Connect Menlo that increases traffic. But we are asking to see that alternative listed. That's all.
Thank you. That was well put. Um, do we have other commissioners who should speak now? Commissioner Kennedy? You're on mute, Commissioner Kennedy.
I have a 4:00 AM wake up for a 7:00 AM meeting start uh on the East Coast, so I'm going to have to drop off. Um, I am in complete agreement with Commissioners Riggs and uh DeCarty. I think generally speaking, this whole mechanism is completely broken. Um, and that uh, you know, one of the things that COVID taught us is that the nature of work and the place value of work is forever changed. And for any project to come before us saying that they, there, there are no changes to base assumptions, you know, with regard to traffic and behi- single occupancy vehicle travel, um, I think is untrue. So you know, I I think that there is going to be a lot of thing, pressure to go back to the drawing board, because um, you know, like, I can't say it any better than Commissioner Riggs said it, you know, that 100% diversion of new trips is going to be, I think, uh, the the starting place. But I'm sorry that I have to step off, but my day starts way too early tomorrow, so apologies.
Thank you. Well, we do have a quorum without you, but uh, thanks for your input. Um, Commissioner DeCarty, I think you were raising your hand.
No, I was simply uh saying good evening, Commissioner Kennedy. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, uh, do we have any further comments on the scoping session? Hey, I'd like, oh, Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Commissioner uh Chair Dorn, um, for your um excellent guidance of us through this session here this evening. I think the way you did it was hugely helpful and illuminating, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to return to Mr. Paz and see if he feels that he's gotten enough input from the commission, if he has follow-up questions. Actually, I just want to say one more thing uh before I do that. In case it wasn't completely clear from my previous line of questioning, I'm very much in agreement with my fellow commissioners uh that uh, and I think Commissioner uh Riggs put it very well in his last uh comments that uh, we would like very much for this um EIR to include an alternative that would result in no net miles traveled, no new traffic congestion, uh, no impact on level of service. Uh, if we conclude that in uh the EIR, and then I think you can work with the uh, with the applicant to decide, you know, what that alternative would be, what that would look like. I think that would be something we'd like to have available for consideration.
Yes, I think that that alternative is clear, and I do believe we um, unless there's anything else from the the commission with it, which it seems that there is not on the scope of the IR. I believe we ha- we have what we need, and again, we we do have a court reporter with us this evening, and so everything will be uh transcribed. And then uh, we're, we're going to continue to consider uh your feedback as we analyze the the project and the EIR.
Right. Um, in that case, uh, I think.
Through the chair, I see a hand up.
Sorry.
Commissioner Riggs.
Mr. Riggs.
And I apologize for adding yet another comment, but um, I wouldn't want us to leave the applicant feeling that uh, we have decided on a philosophical basis to put up a roadblock to an important project for important and very admirable work. I do think, and I have said this on other issues for years, that the city of Menlo Park, when they address zoning or address particular project approvals, needs to step forward to assist uh in making a a good outcome. We have recently had the opportunity at uh the city council to do so by approving a local uh transit program. And I hope that we continue to do that, um, grow it and prove that um, we can actually provide or or cause to be provided, because it's for the most part not even funded by the city, but requires city backing, we can provide an important uh alternative means for transportation. So thank you for letting me add that comment.
Thank you. So uh, there are no further comments from the commission. I will close the study session now. Sorry, close the uh public hearing portion of our meeting and move on to the study session. This is a study session on application by Jason Chang for 1075 O'Brien Drive and 20 Kelly Court CS Bio Phase 3 Project. Study session on a request for an amended and restated conditional development permit, BMR housing agreement, and environmental review for the construction of a new seven-story research and development R and D slash office building, approximately 100,000 square feet of gross floor area in size, with a ground floor restaurant, food court, commercial space on a two-parcel site in the LSB Life Sciences Bonus Zoning District. A new five-level parking structure would be constructed on 20 Kelly Court. The existing one-story warehouse building in 1075 O'Brien Drive and the two-story portion of the R and D building at 20 Kelly Court would be demolished. The three-story portion of the building at 20 Kelly Court is proposed to remain, and a new hazardous materials utility yard attached to the building would be constructed. The proposed project includes a request for the storage and use of hazardous materials for emergency backup, for the emergency backup generator, and for the use of hazardous materials for future research and development processes. The proposed project would include a BMR agreement per the city's ordinance and guidelines. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height and floor area ratio, FAR, under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project also includes a lot merger to merge the two existing parcels. Both parcels would be governed by the amended and restated CDP. Um, so Mr. Paz, I think we are not going to have any further presentations. Uh, so we would open it up to public comment on the study session at this point.
That, um, so if there are clarifying questions on the study session, the commission does have the opportunity to ask those of the applicant or of staff. And then, yes, you're correct, we would turn to public comment.
Okay. Do we have any uh clarifying questions from the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Turner, I'd like to open it up for public comments now. Uh, the public is now invited to comment on the study session, which includes the project itself and the architecture of the project as opposed to only the environmental impact report. Do we have any uh hands raised at this time, Mr. Turner?
I do not see any hands raised at this time, um, but maybe we can give it a minute or two. As a reminder, if you do have a comment, um, please press the raised hand, raise hand button, and I will meet you. Um, if you are calling in, um, please click uh star nine to indicate you have a comment.
Any hands raised?
I do not have hands raised this time.
Okay, I'd like to close the public comment section, section of the agenda and bring it back to the commission for further questions or comments from the commissioners. Do we have anybody that would like to kick it off? Okay, uh, I will actually ask a question for the applicant. We did have this question that came up in the study session about hazardous materials in this site. And our ER, EIR consultant said that the um, site was considered previously in the uh prior environmental impact report, uh, and that it was not actually in. Uh, and that it was not actually in a liquefaction zone. But I think there is, um, still some apprehension from the neighborhood about the storage of hazardous materials on the site. Could you tell us a little bit about what hazardous materials are, uh, stored? As, as I read it, it would be fuel for the backup generator. I assume that's diesel fuel, uh, which is probably not the most, the most hazardous material that the neighborhood would be concerned about, not to minimize, you know, oil in the bay, but, uh, I think people are probably more concerned with biohazards, uh, in this site. Uh, and there's not very much detail. I think there's, uh, a mention of future storage of, of hazardous materials in connection with, you know, the research and development activities. But could you talk to us a little bit about what kind of materials have been stored there in the past? What you would envision being stored there in the future and what kind of precautions, uh, intend to take around the storage? And again, I, I want to focus on sort of biohazards and things unique to this site rather than things like diesel fuel.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so the, the two primary chemicals that we have on site, uh, are called, uh, DMF, uh, which is dimethylformamide and acetonitrile. Uh, in terms of hazardous profiles, the, the primary concern is flammability, um, not biohazard. In terms of the quantities that we typically have on site, um, we, we use a, um, single-step manufacturing process, so all the solvents that we used are, um, for washing. So if you would imagine, uh, um, you know, a washing machine, for example, uh, those are typically the size of our, our vessels, which are, um, three, anywhere from, you know, one liter to about 400 liters. So if we were to quantify that into gallons, we're about, you know, a quarter gallon to about 80 gallons roughly. Um, that's, that's the size of our vessels. So the amount of chemicals that we have on site at, at any one time is in the 5,000 to 10,000 gallon range, um, which is similar to a, um, gas tanker truck that you would see on the road. Um, that's, that's typically how much hazardous chemicals we would have on site. Um, as, as I was mentioning, um, the, the main concern is, uh, flammability, uh, not biohazard. So if there were, uh, an earthquake, um, obviously, the fire department and building code uh, requires our, our property to be, um, able to handle a one-hour, uh, minimum. Uh, some of our areas can handle up to a four-hour, uh, fire. Um, I don't know if that answers, or gives you a high-level summary of the chemicals we have on site, uh, and the quantities. Uh, with regards to the new facilities that are being built, um, it's more of a relocation of where our existing hazardous chemicals are stored. We are increasing the capacity, uh, and that would allow us to reinforce our, our, um, walls and to have the, the chemicals stored in an outside bunker versus within, um, our existing building. Um, I think that would actually provide, uh, even more safety. Um, but we are relocating, um, and increasing capacity versus just adding 100% new cap, new capacity.
Okay, um, that is helpful. Thank you. Um, Mr. Paws, did you want to add something to that?
Yes, if I may, just to discuss on the, on the side of the regulatory process and approvals that are required, uh, for the continued um, and expanded use of the hazardous materials. There is a, a process in the life science districts for administrative permit approval for hazardous materials used in storage. And as part of that process, the, the application materials are sent to the building division, the fire protection district, which is an outside agency, as well as the San Mateo County Environmental Health and West Bay Sanitary District, uh, for the review um, and, and comment. And then ultimately, if there are conditions that need to be addressed, uh, in order for a use to, um, to use and store hazardous materials on site, those are, uh, those are handled before they can begin operation. And similar to that process for an administrative permit as part of the conditional development permit or the, uh, restated and amended, uh, CDP would be requested here. There would be an outline process for hazardous materials review for use at this site. And then, uh, through the chair, I do see, uh, Jason's hand raised as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chang, did you want to speak more?
Um, yeah, the, the only other thing I wanted to add was the, the new building on 1075 O'Brien, um, it's not going to be utilizing the same chemicals um, as what 20 Kelly Court is using. So we are increasing storage capacity on 20 Kelly Court for commercial manufacturing of, um, different drugs that we, um, support the pharmaceutical industry with. The, the purpose of 1075 O'Brien is to be a research and development facility for new drug discovery. Um, so the chemicals there would be similar to, uh, an academic lab, um, that you'd see at UCSF or Stanford, if that makes sense.
So is it fair to assume that in a academic lab sort of setting, that there'd be a broader range of materials required? Because you're going to be doing a broader range of operations than in manufacturing. So over time, there would be a broader range of materials stored on the site?
A broader range, but not biohazard. So the quantities would be significantly less, and we're looking at drug discovery, um, not biological materials.
Okay, thank you. So do we have other commissioners that would like to speak this time? Commissioner Riccardi.
Yeah, I'm happy to go. Um, I think this is a question for staff, and the staff report, um, Mr. Paws, is a, is a reference to this project in connection to other projects and to think about connectivity. And I just wondered how you're doing that. So it's a little bit in the project overview, as you talked about very nicely. Schools on one side, you know, gathering places for schools and kids on the other side, housing East Palo Alto below the potential, uh, Willow Village in that mix. How are you looking at that? How are you, as a staff, looking at the, uh, connectivity through this section of our town? And what does that process look like and what might it come up with?
Yes, so I think, uh, to your point, some of the things that we, we realized, uh, were that there, there is, uh, a potential opportunity, um, especially with the three, uh, the three sites. So there's the subject property, uh, which is 1075 O'Brien Drive and 20 Kelly Court. Uh, and then the property, uh, the, to the east, directly adjacent at 1125 O'Brien Drive. Um, and then the, the Willow Village, uh, development that's proposed to the north. And, and looking at some of the proposed uses as part of the Willow Village project, we, uh, we noted that it would, it would be beneficial to have a connection, uh, there. And so part of the, what staff has done is, is to prompt the property owners. Uh, and so we've had discussions, um, with, with Jason about, uh, potentially creating a pedestrian, uh, pathway on the east side of, of his project site. Um, and he, and he's maintained that he's, he's amenable and, and as, as those discussions progress, uh, will, will participate. Um, in them, we, we do need to get the, the other project applicants, um, on, on board and confirm kind of the, the logistics of that. So as, as far as like the staff, staff role in it, it's, I think it's, it's taking that, uh, larger view and then, uh, trying to facilitate these discussions with the private property owners who were proposing these projects.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, um, yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that's fabulous, and I would just really encourage that. Um, and yeah, I mean, there's not a great way to look at all of this, some of these documents. I think maybe B24, B25 might do it. Um, and I, I guess I would make this point, which is, um, looking at that east side, we're fortunate now that the other project we just looked at is actually not going to have the large parking garage right there. They're going to have, it's now going to be a ground level. But there's a way to be able to do this that would, yes, you could have a, a walkway through there. But it would feel uninviting, um, that it would be thin, that it would feel like a canyon, that it would not have a sense of actually being welcoming through to somebody who wanted to see walking through that, um, area. Or it could be very inviting, could be a little bit wider, it could have a sense of visual being able to see through. And we have this incredible opportunity in this space because we have the hetch, hetchy right-of-way that runs in one direction. And we have the potential here to connect all the way up into Willow Village before that's been decided. So that you could actually connect it there. You could imagine these crisscrossing green paths that would in fact be almost dead center in that entire area of our town. It would actually take a look at the housing, the single-paving housing that is now essentially blocked off. Uh, and then make a resident feel like they were actually welcome to go all the way through to Willow Village, where supposedly there's going to be community amenities. And to think about the community amenity in these two projects. So I just really want to applaud you as the city and city staff for leaning into that. But to really help facilitate that it actually ends up being something that comes out of it that is welcoming to our community as opposed to checking the box that, yeah, we sort of drew a line and people could walk through that. Um, so that's the first thing that I just really, really want to stress tonight. And I, I want to draw attention to the one piece of public comment we got, which is attachment G and Mr. Guzman. And I think that's splendidly put. And I, I really, I, I'm so, I mean, as a planning commissioner, it's great to get that feedback because you can get a feel for what a neighbor really wants to be able to see. And I think that is also in, in that spirit. So I know as long as I'm talking that I'll just, I, I can kind of finish out my comments, um, Chair Doran, to the, um, things that were asked about. And I think it kind of builds on this, which is, um, first, I just want to, um, echo what, um, Commissioner Riggs said at the end of the EIR session and then what I said at the beginning of my comments, which is, I'm, I'm excited for CS Bio to maintain their role in our community and absolutely want this to work for them um, and for their continued prosperity, uh, for us. Um, but I think that that can happen in better integration into our community. And so I offer these thoughts on the project along those lines. Um, kind of working backwards and looking at the community amenity, um, just really would strongly encourage, um, broad outreach to the community. I think, um, it is super interesting in the space that you have. Uh, but I think a restaurant that ends up being blocked off because it's higher on a podium and has a whole bunch of screening. So it looks like it was designed simply for the residents or for the, um, workers in the building. I don't think that really works. Um, you know, you kind of have that on B40 and B42, and you could turn that inside out so that it was actually more public-serving space and welcoming to everybody that was in that neighborhood and actually not sort of just tucked away. So yeah, it's on the first floor. Yeah, it's outside, but it's really just, um, a signal that it's only for, uh, the workers in the building. So that's uh, an example about sort of the restaurant space. Um, but to the community amenity, it's the same thing. I mean, geez, you all are working in biotech. What a great opportunity to think about taking the spirit of what you're doing and your leadership in the world into making that open and accessible to residents and neighbors nearby. I have no idea, you know, job train and others are nearby. I'm not commenting on what the right approach is, but I think the spirit of thinking through that connectivity and the role that you all could play um, at CS Bio and being able to make that really feel connected could be inspiring. Um, so I would just encourage thinking about the community amenity in that light. And then sort of, you know, just in that public open space piece, um, I, you know, it's the same thing on that far side. Right, right now, the way the whole project is oriented is it looks great as a suburb. And even the way the plans are presented to us, it's like, oh, I drive my car in, I take the left on Kelly Court, there's a cul-de-sac, I go into a parking garage. That's great. It looks like a suburb. But that's not what we're looking for. What we're looking for is something that works really well for your needs, but also feels like it's connected to what is a town, what is a center, what a community that has vibrancy, where people work and go to school and do a bunch of other stuff. Um, and so I just, you know, as you think about the layout and the access, as you continue to work on this, including the look and feel of the building, which looks really cool, but it's imposing. Um, you know, it's sort of the seven-story wall that's right up against what that, that, um, walkway will be. So all of these things, I think, can be softened and can be thought about being turned inside out to better engage with the community. While I still think preserving what you all absolutely want to get out of its utility for your, um, for your staff and through to, and your, um, uh, and your company in that mix. Um, so those would be the things that I would, uh, encourage, um, looking at in all of this. And then I just really want to appreciate from the last time we had a conversation, you know, reducing the parking garage by a story. I assume that's a great cost savings for you, and I think that's moving in the right direction. Um, and, you know, really believe that there's a way to be able to think about, uh, reducing traffic that can also play into this and give you a whole lot more options. Um, so that's my overall feedback, which is under the theme of, I think you've got a great project, you're at a really critical juncture and location-wise and community. And I think you could really be part of, with a couple other developers doing something extraordinary that we'd be really proud of for decades and decades to come. And I hope you consider that type of adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riccardi. Um, I actually have a question, uh, before I go to more general comments uh, that I want to follow up, that came up briefly during the environmental impact scoping session. This, uh, mention on page 10, the staff report about greenhouse gas emissions and the potential use of natural gas for space heating for Life Science Building and for-profit restaurant. Um, I'm not sure who this should be addressed to, but I'll start with Mr. Paws, and you could hand it off if appropriate. Um, I, I, I think I have a real hard time getting my head around, uh, why there should be an exception for a for-profit restaurant. In terms of Life Science Building itself, uh, I could understand if there's a need for specific scientific processes, which I think we heard in the earlier session. Uh, there might be a place for natural gas, a little harder to understand, um, you know, for heating, why there's special need, uh, for heating of this building that wouldn't be generally applicable to other buildings. But could you just, uh, uh, it seems to me, you know, probably the city staff didn't just come up with this on their own, that there's been some discussions with the applicant about what's needed. Could you help us understand what's driving the request and why they think that there's something, uh, special about this project that would require an exception to the policy?
Yes, so the, the reach codes were, were adopted and they apply to the, the whole city. So it's not, uh, just this, this area. And so that, that was a part of a, a, a larger, more robust public process. Uh, and ultimately, it was the, the city council through two readings that adopted the amendments to the the building codes for the reach codes. Um, and then those took effect on January 1st of 2020, I believe, or maybe in 2019. Um, but one of the things that was, uh, discussed, uh, when meeting with the stakeholders, uh, and the stakeholders from the life science development community, uh, were that there are different, um, there are, as best as I understand it, there's, uh, there's practices that require a, a finite temperature range. And so if you, if you have variability within that temperature range, then, um, it, it could mess with the experiments and then the, um, the overall ability for that, that used to function in, in the way that it can. And so that exception for space heating for life sciences was included, um, by the, by the city council. The other piece for the for-profit restaurants is for-profit restaurants that are specifically related to cooking on an open flame. And so it's, it's not, uh, it's not space heating for a for-profit restaurant. It's for things like, uh, uh, barbecue-type use or, um, something where the cuisine itself is directly, um, directly linked to the need to cook on an open flame. And each of the restaurant stalls that are proposed within this space would need to apply for, uh, for the appeal, um, individually. So they, you, there wouldn't be a, a blanket for the entire space to use natural gas. It's, it would be on a per, I guess, if it's a, if it's a stall and there are tenant, it would be on a per-tenant basis within that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, and then getting back to the requirement for space heating. So the thinking is, uh, and I think we did hear this in a, a previous session, but I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. That the natural gas supply is more, uh, reliable than the electric supply. And so the worry is that if they use electricity, that there could be an outage. Uh, and that there, they couldn't maintain the temperature they need for their, their experiments that work. Is that, is that a concern? And that there, they couldn't maintain the temperature they need for their, their experiments that work. Is that, is that a concern?
I believe that was, that was part of the consideration when, when this exception was, was adopted. And then the, there's, there's a different process for, for each. So there's the, the appeal process, I believe, requires the environmental quality commission. And then the, the space heating exemption, that's something that would, that would need to be demonstrated to the building official by the, by the proposed use. So just wanted to, to make clear that when we're talking about these exceptions and then we're looking at them in the, in the EIR and the further analysis. We're evaluating them conservatively. So assuming they, they do get the opportunity to, to continue to operate. But as far as like a matter of practice, that the ability to use natural gas for space heating or for cooking in the individual stalls is not guaranteed by a matter of the, the reach codes there. There's discretion there and, and they would need to demonstrate that, that it is necessary and needed.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Riggs has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I, I just thought I would contribute as requested in terms of the architectural review. And that is to start with overall the, I, I, I find this a well-formed building using handsome materials. I understand that the mesh of the parking garage is yet to be finalized. And so I'll assume that the lower two floors of the building also will benefit from some more specifics. And so that can be something to comment later. I did want to ask the applicant to speak to what we are calling building modulation. That all too familiar prescriptive slot in the facade of all the large buildings of Menlo Park. And whether, first of all, if the designer is comfortable with this requirement. And secondly, whether the designer feels that the building is more successful as a result of this modulation. Or whether something actually could be more attractive with a different, if there were a looser interpretation of this requirement.
This is Niall with DGA Architects. I think the modulation works on this building. The, the setback on the long facade fronting Kelly Court defines the entry point to the main lobby. The, the setback that was required on the facade facing O'Brien, we've worked into the massing. So it hasn't impacted the, the space plan of the floors. I, I, I think those are very workable.
In terms of the aesthetics as the front face of the main building. Are you comfortable with this or would you like some more leeway? This is perhaps a bit of a leading question because I'll admit this is not the best presented element of the project.
I, I think it works. I, I don't have a problem with the recess on Kelly Court.
Are you excited by the entry design? Right, that was perhaps too direct a question. I'll move on to another one. The what appears on the, I guess I'll call it the overall perspective with the parking garage on the left and the tower on the right. To the far right is an enclosure of a prominent feature at the corner. Is that a that white hockey stick enclosure? Is that metal panel in, in your estimation or would that be stucco?
I believe we have pulled that one out as metal panel, just to differentiate from stucco that's being used elsewhere on the building.
Right, I think that's terrific. Okay. I hesitate to comment further on a on R and D building that presents itself to the environment rather well. And I'll just leave it at that. And appreciate the depth to which my fellow commissioner went into regarding the site planning. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So I, I will try to give my input on the requested considerations from the staff. Now, I think the architectural design materials I have no problems with. Given they're not completely final, but I think it's very appropriate. It's a very handsome set of buildings. And, you know, far superior to anything that's in the neighborhood right now. So I, I think, I, I don't see a problem there. The site access and layout, I think Commissioner DeCarty said it well about the importance of pedestrian access and the opportunities here for access to Willow Village. The question in the staff court seems to be aimed more at vehicle side access and layout. And I don't see a problem with the vehicular access. The public open space, I share Commissioner DeCarty's concern that it actually be accessible to the public. I think it's sufficient in amount. And as long as it feels that it is accessible, then I think it's appropriate. The community amenity, I, I think the restaurant food court, as long as it is accessible, is acceptable amenity. I, I actually prefer amenities that are onsite and are sort of in bricks and mortar like this to things like the, the proposed the, the list, there's a job training program mentioned in the staff report. I feel there's other ways to address that and those needs are changing all the time. Whereas we're, the applicant's building something here that's probably going to be around for, you know, fifty years. And so I think that amenities that are where we take advantage of the opportunity to put something, you know, to kind of set it in stone for a couple of generations. I, I feel that's a preferable community amenity. So I'm happy with that as long as it feels accessible to the community. And with that, I will see if my fellow commissioners, it looks like Commissioner Harris would like to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Doran. So a couple of things, I would agree with Commissioner DeCarty about the entrance to the restaurant. And I would prefer that it's a food court versus one restaurant. It keeps saying restaurant slash food court, and I don't know where we are on that. But to me, a community amenity would be more than one big restaurant, but a number of different options for people. And, and to Commissioner DeCarty's point, I'd like to see it to be more inviting to the community who lives very close. And one way also, one idea I had was just if, if there's a way to incorporate more community, like a maybe a minority owned restaurant or a community member restaurant as one of the stalls in there. I think that would bring more of the community to feel more invited into the building. But I also am interested in you providing, the applicant to provide the unique strengths that you provide with training and internships. I love that you're already doing that. I would love to see an extension of that. Two, however, I would want to ensure that we do a nice job of calculating what that amenity would be and only include those training activities that are increased above, above and beyond what you're already doing. So as to support the bonus level of development and and have it be well-defined per Chair Doran's concern about a brick and mortar versus something that, you know, may or may not continue. So I would take his point. I, I would like to ask a couple of questions about the, well, discuss the, the parking once more. I see that you reduced by eighty-three parking spaces. And if, if I may ask the applicant to explain how you came up with those eighty-three spots. I, I recognize from the last time you were in front of the planning commission that there was a concern that you would be leasing out spaces of the top two floors to, or to some of the parking to another like to Facebook or one of the other developers. And I know there was some concern from some of the commissioners, I think Barnes, maybe DeCarty about that. So I'm just wondering if through the chair, if I could ask the applicant how they arrived at the eighty-three reduction and what more could potentially be considered.
Yes.
Hi, is this a question for me now?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
So thank, thank you for that. And I appreciate the, the comments earlier about reduction in parking. I'm happy to reduce more. So when, when this development was first laid out, there was requests from other neighbors to absorb some of their parking constraints that they had onto the site. Based on the, the last plan commission's guidance. We did remove a floor and wanted to stay within the requirements of what the code requires, because there is a minimum requirement based on the lab and office ratio. If planning commission's desire is to let us go below those guidances, I'm happy to reduce parking.
Yeah, I think we've all stated our preferences about that earlier. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do it. I, I put those parking stalls there because it was a requirement, not because I feel we need it.
Oh, that's, that's a great clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry.
Commissioner Harris, can I just a quick follow-up on that point? Because it's such a great question. Because it was one of the things in the exchange with the, with the consultants was the burden on not, you know, employees not coming. I guess, can you say why you don't need them? I mean, do you have a concern that your employees will not be able to get there as easily?
Sorry, why, why don't need as many parking stalls? I mean, our, our labs and even the, the new ones that we're doing, we're incorporating obviously a lot more automation. Most of the work that we do in the labs, employees do need to come on site to run their experiments. But there are also, to what Commissioner Harris brought up previously. A lot of work is being done through modeling from addicts and algorithms and machine learning. And to, to the point of what COVID has brought on and working from home. You don't need as many personnel in the office to, to run computerized experiments. We do need obviously personnel to come on site to run physical, chemical and biological experiments. But that personnel can be spread out throughout the days. For our manufacturing site, we also do operate seven days a week and, and not five days a week. So a lot of the parking requirements that the city has had for CS Bio in the past, we've always had significantly more parking built than ever used. So I'm, I'm happy not to, if I can kill another floor of the garage, to, to everyone's benefit.
That's super helpful. Commissioner Harris, thank you for letting me ask the question. It was a great question.
Of course. Okay, well, that, that was super helpful. Thank you so much for giving us a little bit more information about that. I think, I think that's all of my questions. And I also want to echo everyone else, just really happy to have you in our community. And as the growth of Bio, CS Bio, we'd love to have you here in Menlo Park. So really appreciate all your work on this. Thanks.
No problem, absolutely. Would you like me to expand on some of the questions that you had with regards to restaurant versus food court hall?
Oh, sure. Through the chair if it's okay.
Sure.
Oh, okay, sorry. So we, we are definitely proposing a food hall similar to San Pedro in, in San Jose. It, it would not be one restaurant. The, the idea is to have fifteen plus food stalls. And it would, the idea is to have a, definitely an inviting space. Based on the size of the building and our existing personnel, we obviously do not need a restaurant or food hall of this size to support the personnel that we already have on site. The purpose of this is one hundred percent to support the community and provide food options, you know, on the north side of, true north of, of one-on-one. That, that is definitely the expectation. So if, if you feel the design is not inviting, for that purpose, we're happy to modify it to make it more inviting. Because we definitely would like the, the neighborhood to utilize this space. The second point was with regards to the vocational program, one of the things that we've learned and have been able to do during the COVID environment is actually hire culinary individuals and have been able to train them and provide them with lab type skills. And what we've seen is a lot of individuals in the space were not aware that they had the opportunity to work in a, a life, in the life science industry. So one of the things that we would like to do with the food hall is to open the eyes of individuals and give them the opportunity to obtain internships in the life science field and be able to provide internships to support them. So we obviously want to start off with a vocational program that will be more established the next time we speak. And once students go through the vocational program, they would be eligible for a paid internship. I know you have, you mentioned job training earlier. We are working with job training as well as other colleges to provide both technical practical skill sets through CS Bio as well as, you know, skills from, through college courses. So practical and theoretical, theoretical is obviously something that is important to, to anyone that's interested in the life science space. So we'd like to use the restaurants and the food hall to, to support that transition.
Thank you.
Hey. We don't have further comments from the commission. I'd like to ask Mr. Paz if he feels staff has gotten the input they need for the study session.
Thank you, Chair Doran. I, I would say the, yes. For the most part, we, I believe we, we have direction and some clarification on, on some areas for the, for the applicant to refine. I did want to kind of circle back to the, the comment to make the, make the restaurant in the publicly accessible open space more inviting to see if there were any specific modifications that the commission would like to see. And then I also wanted to, to follow up with Commissioner Riggs to see if there were specific design changes that, that he was seeking.
I can try through the chair and try to address my comment on the first point previously. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be prescriptive. It needs to work for the developer. But in looking, I think it was on B forty and B forty-two, that if you looked at sort of the outside space around that restaurant, the public space, it's actually from the street level. It's elevated. it's actually from the street level, it's elevated quite a bit. It's like there's the street and then there's a car and then there's a sidewalk and then there's, it goes up a little bit with a whole bunch of planting and then it goes up to what can look like a fairly protected, at least from one interpretation of looking at that, a fairly elevated and protected space. And so the, the curiosity is to say, is there some way to actually make it look like it is not separated off from the sidewalk at the street by being elevated and protected in some way, but by being more open and inviting. And we have seen other projects and plans that have tried to do that to a certain degree. So that's the curiosity that I had in that and which, which got me to that kind of question.
Um, actually just to reflect on that, I have a question for Mr. Paz. Is there a increased grade level requirement due to, you know, climate change in this area?
Yeah, there is.
Harris?
That's, that's correct.
So for some use like this, which is not actually, you know, a building, would it have to be on the same level as the building or could it be closer to the level of the sidewalk?
So I, I believe that the, their, their sea level rise requirements. And then there's also this areas in the, in the flood zone. So the construction needs to be a, I believe it's two feet minimum above the base flood elevation in this location. So that would, that would be any any permanent use. And, and there's, there's different design strategies, for lack of a better phrasing, that, that can be employed to comply with that. But the engineering division reviews those and the 24 inches above BFE or base flood elevation is the, is the requirement in this area.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, did you want to talk to the design?
Um, yes and no. I don't want to prescribe anything to the architect. I feel that would be just the flip side of what unfortunately the modulation requirements do to an architectural design. I think what I would like to do, if staff is agreeable, would be to encourage a liberal interpretation of the modulation. Taking into account, for example, the most likely points of view and what we are trying to avoid, which what we're trying to achieve is to avoid a monolithic facade that just looks like a big impenetrable block. I don't think architects that take projects of this significance would make that mistake to begin with. To, that is to provide what appears to be an impenetrable block, but you know, that, that's from the eighties and nineties and we got over that. So I, I would, I guess I'm hoping that if the architect knows there's a little more flexibility than at first glance with our requirement for the modulation. For example, the requirement that the modulation go through to the sky without anything intervening. The architect has sort of proposed here, I guess it's fifth and sixth floor balconies. And that's probably against the literal interpretation. But I think it's good. And I think, I, I, I think it's a good move. There are still certain angles from which the recess does appear to go through to the sky. And I'm sorry to say it's become sort of a Menlo Park formula. I think we're up to seven buildings now since the El Camino Real specific plan first created this guideline. And it's awkward for a designer to see this frankly. So if I can be a little more succinct, just that if, if staff is willing to work with the architect and if the architect is at all encouraged by a little more flexibility, I think a more distinctive entry might be possible. Also, to be fair, at this stage, we haven't been presented with an entry perspective. So there may be something coming that is is, is nicer than one can imagine at, at this stage. So I should leave it at that. I, I, I hope that's enough. You know, I hope that's useful in some way for Mr. Paz.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you for the additional clarification on the intent of the, the comments. And, and I'll just add that with the, with the request for an amended and restated CDP, there is, there is some additional flexibility that would otherwise not be, be granted. So the, the zoning standards could be modified through the CDP if desired by the applicant.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. I think everyone's had their chance to speak, so I would like to now close the study session. We have a couple of informational items from Ms. Sandomeyer, Sandomeyer, excuse me.
Yes. Good evening again. Um, so the next meeting in September 27th, we will have the 123 Independence Drive project, and that's for EIR scoping and study session. And then we'll also have two single family homes. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Seeing none, I will adjourn. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Harris.
I'm so sorry. Can you, um, through the chair, could, could you, Ms. Sandomeyer, say again the address of the one for next, the next two weeks, 123 something?
Yeah, 123 Independence Drive.
Okay, that one. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's everything. So I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Dorn. Great job. Thank you, staff.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you for your patience.